Hey Phil, how can I make him louder?
Um, down the bottom right. Can you, we're not loud enough for you, you mean?
You're not on mute.
We can hear you fine, can you not hear us fine?
Say it again?
Oh, you can't hear us well?
No, I can just barely hear you.
Okay, bottom right, there should be a little speaker icon, and if you click on that.
There's a video camera.
No, it's down to the bottom right on the Chromebook, it should be a little.
You don't see it in Zoom though, you know what, try pressing F3. And see if that bumps up your volume, that works for me. Pressing F3, the sound goes up. Press F3 like five or 10. Sounds any better? We should be like singing in the background or something so they can evaluate whether or not they can hear us. Can you hear us any better Herb? Is that getting any louder? Is it any louder yet?
It's not all the way.
Nope.
It says headphones, wait a minute, we don't want headphones.
Okay.
Got it, finally.
Alright, so I hung up the phone. And I'm now in person.
It's perfect timing, everything came together at the right time, Herb is smiling, so he must be able to hear us now.
I can hear you.
And Donna is online, and Ryan Delmasstro just joined, so we're, we're in good shape. Alright, so we're recording, so Herb, if you want to call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'll call our meeting, Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:05. And we do have an agenda, which I don't have in front of me, but I think the agenda deals with, with some equipment for the Center School.
Freezer.
Cafeteria, and also some Chromebooks.
Correct, and item, the first item on there is the Chromebooks, and I actually have Ryan Delmasstro on the call too, he's on the Zoom. As well, so he works for Novus, and so he'll help us out, but just a quick, because Donna, this is your first Finance Committee Meeting, just to give you a quick sense. So, this group, basically what happens is, in our policy, it talks about our purchasing requirements, what your policy is, and so, if there's a purchase less than $5,000, we don't need quotes or bids, we can just make a decision. When there's a single service that is between $5,000 and $10,499, we're required to get two. And basically, $10,500 to $24,999, there's three, and anything over that is a formal bid process. So, basically, my job is superintendent, is to get those bids for you and explain them and give you the information. And to have some conversation about what my recommendation would be, and which way to go, and then, it would be this committee's job then to relay that information to the full board, okay?
Okay.
So, I'm gonna jump on to, the first thing is the, the review of the Chromebook purchase quotes. And just so you know, I'll give you a little background here, the operating system on our current Chromebooks that we have, it's at the end of their life, they will not allow updates anymore, they were manufactured around 2013. And typical life for those, Google gives you about six and a half years of updates. We have 362 Chromebooks, where the operating system will no longer be upgradable, and that was as of July 2019. They're operating on Chrome 76, the current version of Chrome is 83. Why is that important? That is important because for state testing, they were going to require version 75 this year. And we can assume that next year, it is going to be higher than 75, because it's part of the security requirements for the upgrades. Our current Chromebooks will not be able to be used for testing because of that. So, this is one of the benefits of bringing on Novus, is that they discovered this, this issue after the kind of mid-budget process. We'd already presented everything, and they discovered something and said, this is a problem, because we'll get through this year, but next year it's gonna be an issue. We have the money this year to purchase the Chromebooks, that's left in the budget. And so, I asked Ryan Delmasstro, who, who, the Novus rep, to be on this call, just to answer questions. Ryan and I went through kind of reviewing a lease option versus a purchase option. And after a phone call just earlier today, leasing doesn't seem to make a lot of sense if we're gonna pay for it all this year. It just didn't make sense to us. We'll show you that quote. So I'm gonna show you the quotes, and I'll put them on the screen, we got quotes from CDW, BlackRock, and SHI. And, you know, one of the things that this committee is gonna have to kind of consider, and what I wanted to share with you is that, there's a big piece here around the number that we need, and so, we, you know, the number that's on, that I shared already, that 362, we got a quote for 325. And the reason we got a quote for 325 is, is to maintain that one-to-one for our second through eighth graders. But knowing that, gosh, if we go back to distance learning in the fall, we might need more. A big piece of this though, is what is in the breakage and care package costs. You can pay for an instant replacement, or someone to come out and fix something. I'm gonna be honest with you, it's a lot of money, I'm not sure Ryan and I support that, and we wanted to share that with you today. It may make more sense to just buy extra Chromebooks because of the size of our, our group, and to replace them. And so, I'll walk through that, the quotes with you, just give me one second, I'm gonna try and share my screen here and Zoom at the same time.
How much money do we have for this project?
So this is not, but, there's only like, I think we budgeted $10,000 or something like that Herb, so this would be a transfer. We do have the money for it, but I just, you know, it's, it's something that we would have to bring to the board as a transfer.
Yeah.
Just rough idea, what are we talking about, dollar-wise?
Um, so, let me, let me show you, so the rough is, this is the, and you can see the screen, this is the lease option.
Can you make it a little bit bigger? Or no? The plus button on the lower.
I just gotta get my Zoom.
Thank you, perfect, perfect.
Okay, so what you're looking at here is a lease option. And there's either 36 term, 36-month term, or 48. To be honest with you, this would be, we have the money this year, I can't, it's not budgeted for next year, so we were hoping a lease option, Ryan and I were hoping that this was gonna be significantly cheaper, it's not. It's actually just about the same or more. And so, you see that basically annual payment, if this, if we had a dollar buyout at the end, and we had a 36-month term, it would be about $156,000, it's that 52,000 times 3 right there, and then you'd have a dollar buyout and you'd own them. Unlike a used, a car, a new car that you buy, that car when it goes back to the dealer still has a lot of value. These Chromebooks are not gonna have a lot of value at the end. You can see that this here, over a 48 term, it would be 41,000 times 4. So, we kind of looked at and said, ah, it may be cheaper not to lease, okay? So I'll show you that option first, this is the lease option. The first buy option is from CDW. And here's where you're gonna see the cost jump, is that when they're, when you're paying for, the first line there, the 325, the $68,250 is the actual Chromebook itself, okay? When they start getting into a four-year premium Chromebook replacement or repair, and I believe, Ryan, I'm saying this right, that that $35,000 is, is what that is, correct?
Correct.
And so that $35,750, you're paying for that replacement or repair. And honestly, we could buy 100 extra Chromebooks for that amount.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure that's a good way to go, but I wanted to give you a sense, you know, so I could get an accurate quote for the board. So, this upgrade, the, the Chrome and education upgrade, you have to do, you have to do this 70, this 8,000. You've gotta get the actual piece of equipment, which would be 68,000. And so, you're gonna see the same thing here from other, other companies.
Quick question, Phil, does, does the Chromebook price include the charger, or adapters, or whatever it is that they need so that they can keep them going?
Yes, they're good to roll off, off the, the carts, so once we get them, it comes with all the materials that we have. So, this quote is from BlackRock, and you see a similar thing here, is that the cost of the actual Chromebook is this $219.80 per Chromebook. This is that education licensing, and then look here, this is the cost, $69,000 for accidental, accidental damage protection.
That's ridiculous.
It's a lot of money, where, you know, if we only have to replace, and this, again, this is over, I think that's four years, think about if we broke 20 Chromebooks a year as a ballpark, and we needed an additional 80 Chromebooks. 80 times that 212 is nowhere near $69,000.
What kind of breakage history has there been, as far as, you know, I mean, things happen, I get it, but.
Yeah, we've been, it's been reasonable, I think in the beginning, people learned how to carry them, I think, you know, we've had cracked screens, which, it was, and Ryan, you can speak to this, I think the cost to replace a screen was almost as much as a new Chromebook.
Yeah, that's correct.
So, you know, if we have a breakage, we save whatever parts we can, and we would salvage those parts. But we don't have a significant breakage rate, which is why we've never bought insurance on them. I think this was just an option we wanted to show, and give you a sense. My feeling is, and I think Ryan, you can chime in on this too, is that, you know, my feeling is that the 325 is a, is a good number as a, as a baseline, and then instead of doing the care package, you buy an extra 100, and you're still gonna be significantly cheaper. And you have 100, and I'm gonna say extra, they might not be extra, if we go back and we have to do learning from home again, we have more than 325 students, right, so they're going to be used. It's just that, it would allow Novus to take something and go right off the shelf with it, and move off.
And the other part of these warranties, the extended warranty, you'll notice that it includes onsite maintenance. So, if a device breaks, they send a technician out to fix it, and the district's already paying for us to be there every day of the week. So, I mean, why not utilize us to handle the repairs or the replacements, instead of relying on a $69,000 additional contract essentially?
Yeah, and then the third, this is the third quote from SHI. And you see a similar thing in here, you know, it's just, so they were around with that kind of, what I'm gonna call a care package, they're about $150,000 for the 325, you see this, this is, this top line is the actual Chromebook, the $65,975. This care package, which is the breakage deal, was again, $70,000.
More expensive than the actual Chromebooks.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, Ryan said, you know, he's the one that kind of brought this to my attention, to say, it may make more sense not to do that, and just buy more Chromebooks, and have them, because it's cheaper if they break. I mean, it's just a ton of money.
Are the quotes for identical Chromebooks? Are all three, the Chromebook piece, are they all identical?
They all are HP 11A, the eighth generation of the 11A model, yes.
Okay, so it doesn't matter as far as which vendor goes, whether you're getting a better Chromebook or not, they're all identical?
Correct.
Okay, Phil, when, I get the not using the care package, but my question is, do we have to buy 100 extra, or can we get maybe 20 extra, and when those start to dwindle, get another 20 or 25? Instead of having 100 Chromebooks sitting around?
Yeah, and I think we could, for sure, you know, I think I was trying to propose this just as an option to show you as an example. I mean, just the fact that you could buy 100 extra Chromebooks and still be significantly under. What they're trying to offer you for this is, you know, that's, it was just to, to make a point, I think you could buy less, you know, buy fewer. I mean, you know, if you were gonna be safe because you have the money this year, that you buy the additional 40, so that way if you, we have about 440 students, and so if you had 365 Chromebooks that were new, it doesn't mean, also doesn't mean the old Chromebooks are going to go away, they still work. The problem is, is when we push things out on them, because the operating system can't be updated anymore, it's gonna create some headaches if we, we use those as our buffer, and that's why we're recommending to purchase more. It's just a question of how many more, I guess, would you, would you wanna do?
So, if you look at the 365 that need to be replaced before the testing happens, do, are we losing 10 students this year? I know we don't know about the kindergartners, but we're not on the, the testing anyway. So given the particular grade cohorts who we have now, that will be in the testing cohort this year, how many students are we losing or gaining?
I don't know the exact number, but I felt comfortable, and I think I said this to Ryan too, is that, you know, if we have to, with this number of Chromebooks, when we get to testing, if you had 325 as the minimum, which is why we have it as the minimum, it would provide us the safety to test students without having to do major exchanges, moving Chromebooks here, moving, you know, and it's, the problem with this testing is that some students take three hours, some two students take 50 minutes. And so, you know, you make a schedule to rotate Chromebooks, but the problem is, is, you know, you wanna have enough. That number, Michelle, would, would provide you enough.
The reason I was asking is because one of the scenarios we have to be significantly concerned about is that the virus will come back in force next winter, and testing will all be done, we will be virtual learning from November through April next year. And we're not gonna be able to share a Chromebook, maybe within a household, but we're not gonna be able to share devices the way we would if we were in a school building. And I think that, you know, we don't need to buy more than we need, of course not, and especially, we don't need to buy more to account for breakage in years two and three and four, that we might for a lease, we can budget for that next year. But, the number we need, plus the potential for breakage this year, we should have enough for a Chromebook for every child. And I think it's irresponsible for us to pretend that there's not a chance that we're not gonna need one-to-one computers in order to promote any learning this year.
Which is basically that additional 100, so, so taking the preschool out of the mix, we actually have some preschoolers that are using the Chromebooks right now. Because they were, our iPads are older, are, are older than these. But we thought the iPads were better because of touchscreen, but we do have preschoolers using the Chromebooks currently. That additional 100 to get you to 425 would, would be a safe number for you, to give everybody a one-to-one.
Yeah, and honestly, the old Chromebooks can go to the, you know, the preschoolers and the kindergartners, you know, or whatever you need for, for the lower grades, because they're not gonna be testing. But that issue about pushout too, especially you're gonna do more video things with the younger kids. And if you don't have a strong enough, you know, video card within the computer, it's gonna be more frustrating than help engaging to try and use those types of engaging platforms, even with the younger kids. So, my thinking is we have to decide, you know, at what grade do we need the one-to-one for their regular classroom learning, in case it's virtual all winter? And at what age are we gonna depend on old computers and old iPads and, you know, packets, or, you know?
So Phil, what is the cost per computer?
If you're looking at, and this is just an example, it doesn't mean this is the SHI is the one, but if you were looking at this, this particular one and taking out that care package Herb, and you wanted 325, each Chromebook would be $203, $203 for a total of $65,975, and you have to have the education edition license on them. So that's at $24, which is an additional $700, so that's, you know, you're.
That's a pretty good price though, isn't it, for?
It is, it is. We do know that these are backordered too, that, and not these in particular, but almost all Chromebooks. Because everyone's trying to get their hands on them for distance learning, so it's actually a good time to make this decision, because we really would be looking at, I mean, boy, if we get these by September 1, I'd be happy.
Yeah. So Michelle, if I'm, read you correctly, and I kind of agree with you, we would have a computer for every single student in the system. But you're saying we don't need any extra for breakage, well, we need some for breakage and things of that nature, but if we do buy them, we should buy them via the number that we need, plus enough for contingency, I think that's the way I'm reading.
Yes, that, that's what I was saying, yes. So how many students do we anticipate?
I didn't, I don't have that number in front of me, I'm sorry.
Alright, how many students were there this year? Cause it's probably not gonna be.
It's around 440. And, and again, I guess, you know, if that's what you're thinking, I think you could bring that decision to the board to say, here's what we're recommending, you could take your, your, all of these are comparable, right? So if you took your lowest bidder off of this, and, you know, you said, we're gonna, you know, here's the price for Chromebook, and we're gonna do the Chrome edition, we're not gonna do the insurance replacement package, then you could determine what it is, how much you wanna, you know, use for, and we could just do the math, and that would be what you would order. I would just have to show you the transfers. I just need to know if, it was more discussion for, for me to ask you, are you guys frozen, or am I? Did I freeze?
I'm back.
Okay.
Okay.
Happened. I don't know, that might have been a glitch in Zoom, because I thought.
Yeah, I thought everybody was froze too, sorry.
Okay, I don't wanna be rude, but unfortunately I do have to leave. If you wanna just email me over whatever the lowest quote was, and the, the numbers that Michelle and Herb recommend, so that I'm in the loop, and then I'm guessing that that would be fine.
I think I emailed these to you already Donna, so in my last, my email to you, so.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
Thanks Donna.
Okay, goodnight.
Thank you, goodnight.
So if, as long as you're okay, I think you need to be able to make a recommendation for a number. And, and that's easy enough to do, I'll stop sharing a second so I can just make sure, anybody's in the waiting room? Okay, good, nobody's in the waiting room. You could make a recommendation, if you said, hey, I'm not sure what number you want me to come in at, but we could easily say, you know, here's, you know what the 325 is, here's the cost for 375, here's the cost for 425. And let the board make the decision, and, and then it's just a matter of the transfers.
I would probably promote then that we get one for every student, plus 5 to 8% for breakage for the first year, as potential, you know, so if we buy 400, then we get another 20 for potential breakage replacement for contingency. Or a little more, if that would make Ryan more comfortable, I'm just ballparking that. The question is, how many, you know, for example, how many Chromebooks did we buy this year to replace old ones that don't need to be replaced this year, that are good? So, be able to subtract that number out.
We did, we've been, we were fine from prior years where we've had breakages and replacements, and just as our numbers low, so we've.
And it's not a bad thing to have extras for staff too, so to be able, if there are some, some ones that were working, you're gonna wanna be able to give them to teachers too. We can't assume that they all have, you know.
No, that's, that's a really good point, and I think Ryan would chime in on this, because when we have a laptop, a staff laptop, that goes down, we are stuck, we don't have extra laptops.
Yeah, I can tell you, we're replacing, we're replacing 20% a year on staff laptops. And that's not because they're like eating their lunch or drinking their coffee over their laptops, it's just heavy duty burns them out faster when you're using them on video for 12 hours a day, so. Yeah.
So Herb, do you want me?
How did you come about with the Chromebook that we're talking about here? In the marketplace, there are quite a few different companies that produce these, and a lot of them, the price of them ranges probably all the way from $400 or $500 down to $175, or in that range. This is in the $200 range, but, but, the, as far as the quality is concerned, and usage, is there another Chromebook out there that would better serve us in, in the school system? I think at the beginning of our discussion, you mentioned the fact that this Chromebook is used in, in public schools today. And that it can also be used for the testing that we have down the, down the range too. I mean, is it going to serve all, everything, all our needs? Cause we're getting, the price is, is a little over $200, is that on the low side when it comes to Chromebooks?
The device is.
Because we're getting.
Traced really well.
That we're getting a reduced price.
Yeah, these are really nice devices, and we use them with a lot of school districts, we've tried some of the cheaper devices, they're typically like ACERS, and we, we have terrible results with those, the HPs have been rock solid everywhere that we've used them, and I've never.
That's one of the best.
Had the need to, yeah, they're, they're really great, this model's fantastic, and I, we just haven't had the need to, to go with a more expensive model, to be honest with you.
Yeah. So it wouldn't make too much difference whether, we got the expensive model, like the ACES, which is rated very, very high, or the one that we're proposing.
Nope, no, I think these would work really well in the districts.
So Herb, do you want me to put that on the agenda, do you wanna go with Michelle's recommendation there of, Michelle, you said 400 plus 5% for breakage?
Um, 40 minus how many ever we have that would still be serviceable, plus another 40 for breakage. So it depends on how many we have be serviceable.
Okay, Herb, are you okay?
Fairly reasonable.
Okay.
If we do have breakage or something else beyond that, then we'll just have to dig into the budget and, and provide for it, but it shouldn't. But we've had pretty good luck, haven't we, with, with that type of thing, losing them or breaking them?
We have had good luck, yes.
So Michelle, you said about 20 extra?
Um, between 5 and 10%, so at 420 would be 5%, 40 would be 10%.
Yeah, I thought you said 8% before you coming down.
Yeah, I just rounded it over, just because I could calculate 10%, I couldn't calculate the 8% in my head, sorry.
Okay, so I will, I will. Okay, so I'll bring that to the board, then I'll, I'll work with Ryan to update the quote to match that, and we can, we can go with that number, I just need, as long as you're okay with that, having the extras versus the, the breakage plan, which just $70,000 for planning. If nothing breaks, it's, you're not getting anything out of it, so.
No.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, any other questions for Ryan, so he can hit the road? Okay. Thanks Ryan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, okay, so, the second item, sorry, I have to share my screen again, let me get to this, is the Center School freezer. Is the center school freezer. As you know, the, uh, the freezer went down. Just getting to it, uh, it needs a new evaporator and outdoor con, uh, condensing unit. Uh, we got two quotes. Um, and one of the things that I had mentioned to you was trying to get. This freezer attached to our Delta panel.
Right.
It was an astronomical amount of money, I did not attach it to this. Um, because after talking to Matt Jensen, it was, it was a lot of money, and what I felt was. I asked Matt if we could have a temperature monitoring system put in that was separate, and he said absolutely, and it would just send you an email. When it dropped below a certain temp, said, we're gonna go that route then, so that'll be, you know, a couple hundred bucks at the most. It's kind of what people use on, if they have a vacation home, if the, if the house drops below a certain, they get an email. And that's, that's what we're gonna go for.
We only have so many refrigerators and freezers, it's not like we're, you know, a twenty school district with, you know, forty. Different system monitor, so we're good.
Yeah, so it was, um, so I'll show you the two quotes here that came in. Let me get to these quotes. The first quote was. Share screen. Was from Medford, and these are to replace the exact same equipment. So, um, Medford Wellington Service came in. Uh, you can see walk-in freezer, new evaporator, and outdoor condensing unit, they just listed what they would do. Um, and they broke out their pricing. The price was thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, they included tax, which were tax free, so you would have to take that off. So it's more like twelve seven. But it's still more expensive than the, the same other quote we got. But the same, they're doing the same thing, the second quote we got was from, uh, EMCORE. Same, uh, who actually is a company that services our equipment now, um, they know our equipment, so. They would be doing the same thing, replacing the same material, doing the same job, um, and they came in at eight thousand nine hundred sixty nine dollars. So, under ten grand, uh, when I saw this, I did not get a third quote. So I'm hoping that you, this is gonna be the one that we can just recommend, uh, to the board and just get this freezer fixed.
That makes sense to me.
That's for eight thousand dollars, Ryan.
Eight thousand nine hundred six, uh, nine hundred sixty nine dollars, and I, I compared the specs of what they were doing. And it's the same exact thing, it's the replacement of the same two pieces of material. And the fact that EMCORE came in lower is, is good for us because honestly, that's who's gonna, who is gonna service it anyways in the future. The condensers, um, so we know if we, they have any issues, that, um, they followed through for us really well, so.
Now, was there a guarantee with this or a warranty?
So, um, they, they have the, they give you the, the manufacturer's warranties were the same on the pieces of equipment. And it's, it's, it's typical, I don't have the exact piece, it doesn't attach to this. It goes to the piece of, it's like one year, um, parts and labor. And like three years mechanical or something like that, but I can bring that to the board meeting if you want that extra information.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Yep, I can bring that.
And if, uh, well, if we have a, a one year warranty on parts, right?
I, I believe it's parts and labor.
And labor, huh?
Yeah, which is, uh, uh, that's, I think, business standard at this point in time.
Yeah. And we can get that serviced right after the. First year or two?
Yeah, they, this is on their equipment list, so this is one of those items that they regularly maintain. It just makes more sense to, uh, replace this because it's, it's dead.
Okay.
Any other questions about this?
Not for me.
No, I think it's okay, I. They would put it in this summer sometime, or after we.
They could, yeah, they could do it, they could do it as soon as we, um, we sign with them, they're, they're, they can, they just have to order the parts. Uh, the equipment, but they could do it, yeah, they'll get it done.
Now, how is it, as far as the size is concerned, is it larger or smaller or the same size as the other freezer that we had?
It's a good question, so it doesn't change the actual structure of the freezer. It only changes the condenser and the evaporator, and the, the condenser and evaporator are sized to the size of the freezer.
So you're changing the box, you're changing the guts that make it cold.
Correct, yes. Yes. Which is typical because you're boxed in, unless you're doing construction projects. You, you, you know, it's, you're gonna add a, add a zero to that price tag.
Yeah, we don't wanna have to take down any walls to get a refrigerator in route.
No, no, so they'll do, uh, they'll have to pull a permit for, for the work that do, that they're doing. Um, but that's not an issue, we've done that before.
No, we have the money for this, right?
So these will both be in as, um, what I'll do is, is, for, for next week is I'll pull, I have to meet with Donna. Um, and look at the money that's remaining and make transfers, transfers for both of these, but. Uh, we have, uh, I believe close to probably four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred thousand dollars right now.
Right, yeah.
And so we're gonna, even after these. I still think we could easily return three hundred thousand dollars to the town. Which I think they would appreciate, and I, I haven't, like, I'm not like, if we needed something along the way, we've been purchasing, we haven't been. You know, we've been frugal with our money, but we haven't had a, you know, going for a, a spending spree, we haven't done that. And it's better to give them cash back than repay and put us in the predicament next year.
Yeah, we'll give it back, unless there's something we really need.
Yeah, and we won't know that, that, that number really until July, once everything has settled. Um, August, you know. But, um, we'll have a, a pretty solid ballpark of what, after these two items. Uh, knock on wood, that nothing breaks or catastrophic happens in the next twenty seven days, which is. At this point, it's two thousand twenty, and it's, 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 but there's potential for that. So.
Okay, so you're gonna put a package together for the board to, uh, approve or not approve at the next meeting then?
Yes, so they would.
For the Chromebook and also for the, for the freezer.
Yep, the, I'll put a package for them to approve, and I'll put a package in, which I don't even, I don't think our policy says they should, they should approve. But because it's not in our budget, meaning we didn't budget for it, it's, it's something we're adjusting money for. And it's within the tran, we'll, we'll have to make a transfer, I think it's something that, that they should vote on.
Okay. And it's on a recommendation of the, uh, finance committee.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Very good.
For me.
Yeah.
Okay, Herb, I'll give you a call tomorrow about the agenda, if that works for you.
Uh, tomorrow, okay.
Perfect, any, anytime, good or?
Whenever.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Okay, thanks all, good night.
All right, thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.